Knowing more of the feels. Um, before I begin, um, Laura was kind enough to point out to you that the microphones in the room are really sensitive. So if you could just try to limit the the sidebars because a lot of that is going to get picked up very easily. So we'd appreciate it if you could try to limit that. So when you said that, go ahead.
The Board of Appeals of the Town of South Borough will hold a public hearing via Zoom. I am here Wednesday, December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at seven o'clock P M. With regard to the Petition Affairs Development Group LLC located at two fifty Turnpike Road, map twenty-seven lot two A, South Borough Mount. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow two buildings and two uses on one lot. The property is located in the industrial and residential aid district.
All right.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good thanks. I'm happy to give our presentation. That's all right.
You could just yeah, just recognize yourself to begin with.
Will do. I'm Brian Charville. I'm the Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel of Affairs Development Group. Our headquarters is over at one hundred eighteen Turnpike Road here in South Borough. And I was pleased to be before you guys last week on the forty B application for one twenty turnpike. Uh, again, as Laura said, we're talking tonight about two fifty turnpike tonight. Uh, I'm joined tonight by my associate, George Benan, who's also an attorney. And we really appreciate the time and the chance to tell you about this proposed new building. Uh, it would be what's called a contractor yard building on an existing lot at two fifty turnpike. Why are we here? Under the South Borough zoning by law, any uh instance where there are two buildings and or two principal uses on one lot require a special permit. And I think you all know the you're the zoning board, so I think you know the philosophy behind it. It's in the town's interest to know uh lot by lot where there are going to be more than one principal structure on the lot. And evaluate them for things like fire separation, whether they work together. And then when it comes to two principal uses, it's also in the town's interest to know what those two uses are. There could be a zone where a daycare and a heliport are both allowed. But again, that's two principal uses, and it's important for the town to know what those uses are and whether they work together. And that's an extreme example, but uh with this special permit, their the use of their proposed, we think are highly compatible with each other. And what we have is an existing special permit that this board granted about fifteen months ago. I think it was August or September twenty twenty-two, and that was to allow allow the special permit self-storage to two fifty turnpike. So my client two fifty FD two fifty turnpike owns the lot. There's not a question of like being under P N S divided like that. It's already owned. And what they took was, as you may recall, a disused office building and opposed to renovate it because self-storage seemed like a more economic use. There was more demand for self-storage than there was in maintenance for office. And I'm pleased to say that further to that special permit from last year, we then went and saw the uh planning board for major site plan review. They issued a site plan decision. And in the meantime, renovation has happened. And you probably recognize the building as you would drive by overnight as Beehive, which is self-storage. And it's set to open very soon, but the renovation is complete. So there we have a special permit use self-storage under zone about. And that's in the industrial zone. The bylaw says, though, that contractor yard building is a by right use. And so although last year the plan was to have the self-storage structure, which is interior renovation, plus open storage in what's an existing apartment lot. There is now more market demand for this contract yard building use. And so the thought would be if you all would grant the special permit and the planning board would grant a site plan modification, that then the uses would be self-storage within the existing building as constructive and a new contractor yard building atop the existing apartment lot. Ms. Davis, did you get the two slides I sent? If you don't mind pointing the first one, please. This will help orient everybody. And not to bury the lead, I wanted to be sure to note for the board that the advocate, Mr. Ferris, had the chance today to speak with Attorney St. Andre, who represents many conservative butters. And there was agreement that we were going to ask that this matter be continued to the board's January seventeenth meeting for further discussion while they have a chance to talk in the meantime. So that's where we're headed for that we're having to. So where we are is, if you'll forgive my laser, um. I'll just skip my narrative. That's all right. So you see Turnpike Road to the north, and this plan is oriented with north to the top. Uh, to the left, you see the square rectangle looking building number two fifty. It says existing three-story brick. That's the Beehive self-storage, which again was an interior renovation. And from when this building was built in, I think, the late eighties, because it was an office use, there were pretty significant parking requirements. So there's parking that rings the build, the existing building around to the uh west. And there's a large parking lot there to east that's separated by some forest in the middle. And right now, it's one, the parking lot is one large imperious surface with a few islands, traffic islands, but that's it. So the idea is that if the special permit would be granted and if the site, the planning board would grant uh the site plan approval, the contractors yard building would be built, and that's the rectangle to the bottom right. Thank you. Yeah, that's it. And the dimensions of it, as proposed, are sixty feet north-south to sixty feet deep and two hundred forty feet wide. And again, if constructed, it would be ten bays that are twenty-four feet wide each. You may think to yourself, gee, what's the contractor yard building? And I I mentioned this, I think, in passing when we were talking about the forty B, the other site last week. I don't think that the South Borough zoning by law defines contractor yard building. Again, it's named as a phrase as a by right use in the industrial zone. But it doesn't define exactly what that means. Well, I've looked, for example, to the mall board's zoning requirements. And I think this is a a commonly understood definition. But what it says is contractor's yard is a building that is used by contractors and tradespeople for the storage of supplies, tools, quote. And that's what the intent is here, that each of these ten bays could be leased by a tenant and that they would use it for their business. So to again typically tradespeople. A local contractor could use it for storage, that sort of thing. Ms. Davis, if you don't mind switching to slide number two. This helps show the front elevation. So if you would pull into the existing parking lot and be facing the front of the contractor's yard building, so you're looking south, this is what you can see. Uh, each of the ten units would have a roll-up door as well as a walk-in door. And as we see here, at the bottom is a rear view, but again, just a uh second egress door to the south. And that is pretty much it in terms of how we look. Uh, the building in the front elevation steps down slightly from right to left to follow the grade of parking lot. So I think every two or three units, the 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 building declines slightly, maybe two feet now as proposed. So in terms of one thing to think about is, again, the comity of the uses. And we think that there's a lot of comity in terms of self-storage and contractor uh tradesperson's storage being very analogous. They're really the same thing, which is storage, very passive with low traffic counts in and out. There was a, I think our traffic study was submitted with this application. Um, they just are on a different scale in that each of these ten units would be, I think, one thousand four hundred forty square feet. Whereas the um the storage units inside Beehive are typical self-storage units here with roll-up doors. So they're they're, you know, as small as, I think, five by ten square feet uh to maybe twenty by thirty. But again, this we're talking about for each one sixty by twenty-four. So different scale. And that's pretty much the the building itself. Um, so use-wise, again, we think there's a lot of comity between the two. And again, when it comes to the zoning by law, there's interest in the town knowing about and granting a special permit, special consideration, a special review for any instance where there would be two buildings on one lot. Uh, if you don't mind going back to the first slide. Two fifty turnpike is a a large lot. Uh, you see note there toward the center where it references, I think it's four point nine five one acres. So it's about two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet of area. The lot line of this lot begins there to the bottom left. Thank you, and goes east, then that it goes diagonally to the northeast and then pretty much straight over to the east again, and then up slightly to Parkerville Road. One way, you know, I know the zoning board thinks about this, and and we as zoning lawyers think about this is what's the density outcome going to be, even if there's a second building? And, you know, or we're kind of project a wall in which I realize is a a very urban jurisdiction in contrast with South Borough. But there, the special permits allow density up to two point oh F A R, for example. So that means on a, in that example, it means that um on a lot of two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet, you could build uh city council there would approve four hundred and thirty thousand square feet of density. I've branded that's high, and that's where you mainly get such density. But here, the density would remain very, very low, we think, by any standard at point three two. Uh, you have the self-storage building, which is fifty um five thousand square feet. The contractor's yard building would be, as I said, fourteen thousand four hundred square feet, all on just the one level. And so, yeah, again, that that ratio is a low density point three two. Uh, so there there's separation between the buildings. They're not stacked on top of each other. Indeed, there's uh the wetland that you see demarcated just to the east of Beehive. And that's a separation between these two. So there's really plenty of area for us, we think, to do this, have two buildings. Uh, you'll note there is a zone line here, which is this lot falls in both the industrial zone and residency. And of course, the different zones a lot of different uses. Um, self-storage is a special permit use in the industrial zone. Uh, contractor's yard building is a by right use in the industrial zone. Now, you'll note that the zone line does go right down, not the middle of, but sort of the bottom third or so of the proposed building. And what the engineer has laid out here is that your zoning by law, I think it's section one seventy-four five D, allows a use from the less restrictive zone, which in this case is industrial, to go up to thirty feet into the more restrictive zone, which in this case is residence A. What you have on site today uh is the parking lot for the former office building goes into residence A, and that's been there. And so with this construction, the contractor's yard building would just go on top of a uh portion of parking lot. There would not be an expanded uh reach, if you will, into the residence A portion of the lot. So we think the bylaw allows the building to span the way that it does. You know, in terms of approvals, we're before you all tonight, and again, back on January seventeenth, we'll be here again. Um, we have already, though, with this project, been through the Conservation Commission in recent months. Um, there we had filed a notice of intent that shows the building. And the Conservation Commission and their um civil engineer peer reviewer and wetlands peer reviewers had a chance to look at what was proposed, look at all the drainage, the stormwater flow, and to have it changes be made, which did happen. And then the Conservation Commission ultimately did issue their order of conditions along with the stormwater local bylaw permit. And those have been reported with the Worcester Registry. Uh, so having completed that, we're before you all to gain your approval for the two buildings and the two uses. And then after that, we'll, as I mentioned earlier, go to the planning board for site plan review. It's there that the planning board will have the chance to legislate lighting changes, screening, parking, uh, all the things of that nature, fencing, just the same things that we talked about with planning boards about a year ago, as they approved the site plan for the Beehive Building. We'll talk with them about um what is appropriate for this contractor yard building. So that's um basically the introduction. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions you only have at this time. And I know that Attorney St. Andre wanted to give some feedback, and we can talk more about what their concerns are.
Um, if you don't mind, the very first thing I would ask is you you mentioned you had an agreement with Mr. Andre to continue his hearing.
That's right.
To just explain a little bit more about the nature of what you agreed to and what you researched earlier between now and then.
Yes, yeah. Um, I think it's safe to say, you'll hear it directly from Attorney St. Andre, that there's concern, not so much about this building itself, but more about what lies ahead in terms of how the different lot to the south might be developed. And so there's concern about how the special permit granted for the contractor's yard building might set a precedent about a further action, uh most likely a forty B uh proposed. And and that's not anything that's private. Uh, it's it's public knowledge that the same applicant did receive a site eligibility approval for mass housing for potential forty B on that separate lot to the south. So I think that's the concern. And again, Mr. Ferris reached out to John earlier today, and they I think had a good conversation, where John had a chance to elaborate on what his client's concerns are. And the thought is that we're going to explore whether there might be any conditions in this site plan decision that could uh allay the concerns they have about this building, of course. The same as they'll be able to suggest conditions that would be a part of a site plan review by the planning board, but also make sure that any concerns they have about the precedential effect of this decision would not um affect arguments that they may want to make against the forty B whenever that does come forward.
Okay.
And so I we had just looked at the calendar, and your next scheduled meeting is January seventeenth, so we thought we could aim for that for a few minutes. Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, Mr. St. Andre.
Listen, good evening. My name is John St. Andre. I live at fourteen Skylar Drive, uh, sort of in the neighborhood here, and I represent several of the butters and I think most of the room that's here tonight. I feel like I'm at my son's recital, where everyone had to show. But in any event, I thought I would just kind of give you a little bit background. On December eighteenth, I sent the board a a tome uh explaining our issues, I think, and I don't know if you've had a chance to review it. It's it's pretty in-depth. There's a lot of stuff there. And uh, there's a lot of stuff for you to to digest, especially if you're not lawyers. But what our main concern is that when you do look at that uh plan that's up on there, now I think it's uh plan number one or slide number one, you'll see that there is a residential zone in an industrial zone. There's the zone line runs right through the proposed building. It is on residential property. The residential property isn't just uh out in the middle of nowhere. This residential property is contiguous to a larger section that borders Sarson Stone, Skylar Drive, and uh Parkerville Road. What's going on here is back in nineteen eighty-six, when Andy Lane came in to develop and uh construct the building that you see on two fifty uh Turnpike Road on the left side, he made an agreement with the the butters and the neighborhood that this would be this lot behind here, which was one lot at the time, which is now shown basically as lot B would not be buildable. And that there would be an open space buffer around that area because it's so wet and it borders all of the the neighborhood and that there'd be no uh access to Parkerville Road through this lot. Back then, and so a a special permit was granted, and we move on. In nineteen ninety, there was a special permit granted to lease systems that came in the same building. And according to that special permit, conditions were met, and the conditions were outlined in the permit. Those conditions were bargained and negotiated with between the developer and the butters here. The conditions included a uh no build on the residential lot. That's exactly what they're proposing to do now. Those restrictions and those conditions still apply to that residential lot, and they still apply to that section of the building that they proposed to put on the residential lot. The problem is, is that this is a what we believe to be a change of use that requires a use variance. It can't be granted by special permit. It is a use variance requirement. If it's a use variance, this board, as of a couple of years ago, doesn't have the power to grant that anymore. It's supposed to go to town meeting. That came about as a result of the Park Central controversy, if you recall. But what we say is this is not a special permit situation. This requires a special use because now you're trying to put an industrial use, this contractor's building, on residential land, and it's not permitted. So that's the first problem. We don't think the board has the power to grant that. The second problem is that these restrictions still apply. Town council applied on this uh last year. Uh, the planning board asked town council certain questions, and one of the questions was this thirty feet of parking lot, is that legal or not? That's the thirty feet that's in the residential lot. Town council in an email, and I have it, said it's it's an illegal use. So town council is backing us up. The restrictions that we're talking about, uh, the the applicant says that the restrictions don't apply because the use that uh they were granted for no longer exists or was abandoned. Town council says they still apply, and they run with the land. They're still there. So these are uh le- legal problems that uh we have as a group now to sift through. What we're saying is that the agreements that were reached between the neighbors, the butters, and the developers back in nineteen eighty-six and nineteen ninety have become property rights, not only of the neighbors and the the butters, but also of the town. There's a written agreement by Andy Lane that was part of the town record stating that there would be a uh an open space buffer zone in this area in perpetuity. The town has a right to that. That is a town right. We negotiated that through Mark Davis, who's here today. That's a right of the butters. So now what our concern is that if the board grants the permit and allows this building to be put on the residential uh zone, they are saying, basically saying, those agreements and those restrictions no longer apply. And if that's the case, when the applicant comes down the road and applies for his forty B uh uh four-story apartment building in this residential zone, they're going to be able to make the argument that the that the board has taken those restrictions and thrown them out and decided that they don't apply anymore and that those agreements don't apply either. And so we're here saying, well, that can't be the case. And we're trying to stop that from happening, and perhaps we may be able to reach an agreement with Mr. Ferris uh about what could be put in the decision or what could be done, and we're we're willing to work it out with him, which we will hopefully try to do within the next couple of weeks. And I raise these issues, not to say that they're the only ones, but I think they're the most important ones. And you'll see uh in the submission that I gave you that i- it's not the fault of this board or the planning board or anybody currently around, but somebody somebody uh missed it back in nineteen eighty-six and nineteen ninety. They were supposed to record a a document containing deed restrictions in the registry of deeds. If that had happened, we, none of us would be here in this situation. So we're trying to work it out with Mr. Ferris, and maybe within the next month, we might make some progress, but that's kind of the background, and I thought you should be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just if I may respond briefly.
Uh, yes.
As you all know best, if you want to hear town council's opinion on something, you should ask him and hear from him, because I know he'll be happy to look at, again, case by case.
Just I do have some feedback that I was going to address, but I'm glad you brought it.
Right, yeah, thank you. And then, if I may, Attorney St. Andre is wrong on every point he writes. And I say that because he mentions uh the restrictions. There are no recorded restrictions. And under state law, there's a statute that says even if there are restrictions, they expire after thirty years. So that's a problem for him and his clients in their argument. The next problem is that they refer to a special permit that, again, has been completely abandoned. It was for light manufacturing and assembly. And that's where it said no building on the residential A part portion of the lot. That use has been long since abandoned. And along with that special permit. Again, there are no covenants they can point to that says this restriction for the benefit of seventeen Skylar, thirteen Skylar, or any of the butters. You all, I think, have seen easements and covenants and deeds and know enough to know that that's how it's got to read, that there's going to be the protection that he's telling you exists. And it's just not out there. There he's trying to create it that would be very nice for their position, but it just does not exist today, that there are these restrictions. And also, there is building on the residence A portion of the lot. There is a parking lot there that, again, under the bylaw, lawfully extends into the residence A portion from the industrial portion. And he says, we're asking for a use variance, and we're not. We're following the town zoning by law, which says that the use from the less restrictive zone may extend up to thirty feet into the more restricted zone. And again, that's what the bylaw lets happen. It's not a use variance at all. So I want you to know that that's the lay of the land. And I would just say, I think folks should take take a step back and be careful what they wish for in the sense that today it's a large, completely impervious parking lot. As we talked about with Conservation Commission, if this contractor's yard building could be built, fourteen thousand four hundred square feet of that imperviousness will mean stormwater infiltration. The commission saw and approved an infiltration system where all that rain that hits that, today it's a parking lot and goes that runs off and is untreated, will now be picked up through a roof system, treated and put into the ground appropriately, meeting modern standards. And also, as these folks know, because they followed last year's special permit and also the site plan approval, today what the applicant may construct or conduct is the self-storage use inside the existing building and open storage in the parking lot. I'm not sure if folks look at it arms-length, if open storage is more palatable than what is now proposed, which is enclosed storage within a fourteen thousand four hundred square foot building. You know, depending on how you look at it, no pun intended, that may be better than the open storage that as of today can occur. But that's what may be prompted by opposition to any contractor's yard building at all in this property. Thank you.
Thank you. So I thank you both. Um, I did, because all this was flowing in rapidly today, back and forth, I did ask town council to weigh in, which he graciously did. Um, so I mean, I tried to take notes on on the points and, you know, Mr. St. Andre, new variance, can I expect a residential portion? I know I'm repeating some of the things we talked about already. Um, Jay Town, the town council, defined the conditions in the nineteen ninety special permit are perpetual. Uh, he further defined the twenty twenty-two special permit to allow conversion of a building from office to self-store. Well, no, actually, I didn't think more data there. Original, the original special permit was exercised, so restrictions in that special permit become perpetual. That's his opinion on it. I'm really not going to debate it back and forth here. He also stated that he found it irrelevant that the restrictions were never recorded. It was an agreement with the town, with the butters. It is true that it would have been certainly for the betterment of all if it were recorded, but again, his statement is, he finds that irrelevant. Um, because the conditions are in a special permit, those conditions may be waived or modified by subsequent permitting decisions. So the board has that right, I believe is what he's saying, to 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 change them if we see if we see fit. Um, and again, I I I I would be just repeating the same arguments, but I took notes on all the same things that came from nineteen ninety special permits, no building shall be directed on resident lot. Um. But I thought it was relevant for the board members as well as the butters who's here, but that back and forth as well as so.
Thank you.
Um, so having said that, actually, um, you've already agreed to to continue. However, I think we should vet this as much as we can, seeing a lot of people that are here. I would like to start with our own board members. Um, with questions, if you could. Yes, sir.
If we have other speakers, when when would be appropriate to have them talk?
Well, uh, what I'd like to do is just ask the board members, and then after that.
Okay, well, we're just asking from a process standpoint, I.
Yeah, sure. That's fine. Thank you for asking. Um, Paul.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. There's, there is an agreement that exists, but it was never recorded. So it exists and it's part of the decision or the approval from.
Right, it was in the decision for the special permit.
Okay, so that's that's documented.
Correct.
But not recorded.
It's not recorded, so it's not there. It's not at the registry. It's correct.
Okay.
But I mean, we got, obviously, that came out of our own, right, by the special decision, yes. So yes, you're right. It's recorded.
Okay, so that's that's my, I guess, first question. So as far as the the new proposed building goes, and whatever, thirty feet of it is in the. whatever thirty feet of it is in the residential zone.
Less than thirty.
Could could it be moved forward so none of it's in the residential zone?
It could be moved.
So is there any reason why it's not being proposed that way or is there like a hardship? Is there a topography? Is there a would that satisfy a lot of concerns here or a lot of that?
It's not hardship in a variant sense, but by positioning where it is, it avoids a couple of things. First of all, um, there's not a need for such a large septic system, given that the headcount of the buildings has fallen so much and it's not an office use anymore. So part of the septic field, which actually lies under the parking lot, may be decommissioned with this approach, but still some of it will remain. And so shifting the building may affect the septic system.
That that doesn't, at least still.
No heating field, yes, yep. The other thing is that by positioning the building where it is, there will remain open parking area to the north, so that it'll be easier for trucks to access the wall outdoors. And so the more the building is shifted to the north, the less parking lot area there is for turning essential.
But could that be reversed? So the the turning and the like is in the back of the building, not in the front of the building?
I think so.
Because if it already exists as parking lot, if the whole building was moved forward, I'm not engineer here, but if the whole building is moved forward and all trucks and all turns and everything need to be done behind the building. Um, I I was on the board when we approved the contractor base yard building up on North Borough. And that's all behind because it's just in its very little frontage between the building and the road.
Yes.
So you come off the road and everything is done behind the building. Um, it's very tight envelope there at that. Um. Yeah, I'm not an engineer and I try to redesign things, but I would think that um if there's a if if one of the if one of the problems here is is having thirty feet of the building in a residential zone, maybe maybe you can eliminate some of that problem and move it entirely into the industrial zone.
Have you had the engineer look at that?
But that's uh and then um so I I I I understand that if if that, no, it's okay, if that back half is residential, but the parking lot already does exist. So you're not asking to increase or change parking, you're using an existing parking, which I guess could be considered like not an attorney, but like pre-existing non-conforming and in the you know, such. So that's not looking, you don't need to you don't need to increase that surface. You don't need to you know, it might be altered to make it cleaned up or nicer, but you don't need to you're not taking you're not taking more land to to blacktop as opposed to
Okay, it's not making that any worse.
Um. Uh, this is a just a minor thing that and I brought this up at our last meeting on last week, right? That um I'm not a, I understand it's this applicant is applying for something else. I'm not a big fan of having um two different applications co-mainholder reference when we don't necessarily um directly apply to each other. Um, and then I really don't like then if something else is brought into play that like Park Central that has nothing to do with this.
Thank you.
So I I'm not a big uh not a big fan of of co-mainholding things. These are two separate applications, two separate parcels. Same owner, but that's, I mean, I think that's a problem. Um. And yeah, we're not allowed to, yes, you're correct. Our our ability to grant a use variance has been taken away from us, uh which is fine. Um, I don't necessarily see this as a as a use variance here. Um, I think they're very similar uses and especially if we could move the building into the industrial zone, I think that completely takes that concern thought off the off the table because yes, we cannot, we cannot uh grant a new experience. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Doris?
Long good night. Concerns with has been covered by town council. But just to give some background position and what I was concerned about uh in town council gave us an opinion, I'm sure you did. I that the covenants weren't filed, you know. Um, I always understood covenants needed to be filed. And his cousin covenant had been filed, it would not under general mass law. Paris Development Council, after thirty years, it's not affected. So um, you know, my concern is making sure we're right, although we've got an opinion. Um, so just to reiterate that that's not in conflict because the uh developer um is saying covenant is relevant. The neighbors are saying covenant isn't relevant. Um, and then mass loss hasn't been thirty years. It's it's it doesn't matter. So so just to kind of reiterate that, well, sure.
Regard regarding the.
Yeah, whether the uh is the town council stated.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, special permit is perpetual, that these neighbors letter between AJ Lane, Paris Development, but not another name time. Um, that they have to, they have to fulfill their special permit perpetually, but we have the right to um add new restrictions regularly, granted. Um, the other concern is sort of what Paul was saying. Um, I'm also in mind with Paul on bringing in uh another application to the current hero. Um, yeah, there's gonna be another four four new application of backlogs coming in. Um, I'm not me to consider the fact that I've got another application. Um. The uh we've already granted a special permit on the thirty feet. I guess a parking lot is not a building. I mean, I'm just gonna say, but this is a building on thirty. So and the reasoning behind that, that we recall the reasoning behind why we went thirty feet into the residential zone at the time. Why we do that?
Or the.
Well, no, it doesn't exist yet.
The nineteen ninety, we're we're the parking lot.
The parking lot's thirty feet.
Thirty feet and why, why, what? Somebody's gonna answer that. I know someone knows that answer. If you just stay.
One thirty.
Thirty feet into the encourages, is it horizontally approaches thirty feet? It has for thirty years, maybe thirty five, thirty eight, six.
Mark Davis, thirteen Skyler Drive. Um, I'll be back up here and review with you the nineteen eighty six agreement, the nineteen ninety agreement. And I'll review with you the pertinent zoning because A, I was the person that negotiated for the neighborhood in nineteen eighty six and met with Andy Lane and John Garrahan and structured this three-way deal between the neighborhood of Andy Lane and the town. I was here in nineteen ninety back with leaf systems and I can go through that with you. I also served on the planning board. I was in the leading effort to recodify the zoning and set it up the way it is today. I know all about one seventy four dash five and I can review that with you. Just as an oversight, it has zero application to this site and I'll explain why and I'll explain why it's in the zone. Um. Your question was.
So it's a very simple question. The question is, uh I know it's approved. I know there's an agreement. I know what years it is. I've seen the deeds all the way back to nineteen sixty, nineteen ninety. Why do we go in thirty feet more? Simple, short.
Because Andy Lane decided at some point in time to build additional parking on the residential land. It was not permitted by this town. It never got approval by any town board. It just got done and suddenly appeared. Now, that isn't a pre-existing non-conforming use. It is what county town council has defined. It's an illegal use. Now, I in the planning board.
Okay, so you've answered.
Okay.
So it in your mind, it's an illegal use for thirty plus years, somewhere's in that time, or has it been an illegal use over that line thirty feet?
Correct.
Okay, but we don't have that anywhere.
Has that ever been contested or has it ever been?
We're talking about thirty feet.
Yeah, no, but it's 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 um industrial parking on residential land, which is not a permitted use.
All right, okay, if you if if we could, thank you. I I appreciate your your interest.
Okay, so so I'm focused on the thirty feet. That's my takeaway. So we eventually continue. I focus on the thirty feet and.
I I do, I wanna I wanna add something very briefly because you both brought it up is we actually heard from when the town plan raised the very question, how will this impact? So I you're like you're, the point is relevant, but you should know that the town itself is asking that same question, what's the impact?
Thank you.
Just just so you know. Okay, right, thank you. Jamie?
Um, I I my main question was what Paul brought up is why can't we reposition this building to be with all within the industrial zone department lot? Um, to me, that makes a lot more sense and, you know, regardless of any project that may come up on lot B. I am an attorney and precedent does mean something. So just because you say, oh, we can agree, it doesn't have any precedent, that can get twisted a million different ways. Um, so for me personally, I would feel much more comfortable if when you come back in January, that entire building is industrial zone. And I also read um that the special permit for two buildings, having a parking lot thirty feet over thirty years doesn't mean, oh, well, we've had a building there for thirty years. I think it's completely different. So that was my main point. Um, trying to think of, oh, the only other question I had is is it is traffic only going on and off Route nine as part of this proposal?
Yes.
Okay.
Through through the existing uh curb cut.
Yeah.
Straight out from the parking lot to.
Yeah, I just I'd seen something, someone say something in one of the documentation about no traffic on Skylar. And I didn't see that, but I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Um, I think again, the first thing was already stated in terms of just town council's feedback, which is I think very helpful, at least for me. Um, I agree with many of my fellow board members. Um. And again, I do have a struggle with, we have two applications and they're I know they're being treated separately, but it really is not separate to both of you at the same time. So just challenging. So, um, but honestly, I mean, I look forward to the neighbors and the opponent talking more, which sounds like you guys will be, which is great, but I'm looking forward to hearing what the neighbors have to say.
Yeah. All right, um. If anybody wants to, wants to raise questions or request, but just please come to the lectern and state your name and address first, please.
Eric Blazer, nine Skylar Drive. Um, just a simple point and my neighbor will provide a little more clarity. And with regards to the thirty feet parking lot, if you look at the planning board's decision to issue the permit to convert the to the original two fifty building into self-storage, it was contingent upon the developer putting a fence to demarcate the commercial from the residential. It's in the meeting minutes and it's also listed in the drawing in the special use permit and we'd be happy to share that with you. So I think if the the planning board themselves within the meeting minutes recognized that it's an illegal use. So to say, Blair will provide some more color on that, but the planning board themselves made that um consideration last year when they were approving the original special.
What? In the site plan review?
I would that would have been site plan review?
Yes.
Yeah, if you look at the December twelfth meeting minutes.
Okay.
Or I think November twenty first meeting minutes are actually listed in there. It started in November uh twenty first, December twelfth, I think are the two main, if you're gonna do a record search.
That's right.
Um, but Blair can provide some additional color on that point.
Good evening. My name is Blair Sutherland, one three nine Parkerville Road. So I'm a neighbor adjacent to a number of the abutters. Um, so what I want to just talk about is and expand a little bit on what Eric was talking about with regard to the planning board and some of the uh issues brought before them and some of the decisions and and restrictions that was made upon the applicant at the time that um that they put that information forward. So not even a year ago, um I attended and a number of people felt here attended the planning board hearings uh regarding the applicant's um special use permit to convert the 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 two fifty, the building at two fifty into what is now the into what is now the Beehive project. Um, there were a number of conditions that the planning board um stipulated and today, um as we're standing here talking about it, a number of those conditions have not been met by the applicant and yet the applicant is looking for a change already in the use for that property that they were that they were granted. Um, as Eric had stated, the planning board um required a condition that the applicant put a fence that would both be a demarcation and a screening barrier at the property line between the um residential and the commercial property. Um, so that it was addressing some of the concerns that the neighborhood had about um activities that might be happening on that property. Um, the planning board heard our concerns and that was one of the pieces that they stipulated. Uh, to date, that hasn't happened. Um, those discussions are in the planning board um notes and and minutes from November twenty one and December twelve. Um, I I know it's got to be difficult for this board and for that matter, all of the boards for everything that the town does to track what one board is doing uh across, you know, across projects. Um, so that's why I want to reiterate on the record for this board that a fence was required and that wasn't provided. Um, additionally, there were others, some other stipulations that haven't been met, including some concern about lighting on the property. Um, the town, uh the the neighborhood had um reflected some concern about the lighting and the town um looked at their um lighting requirements, you know, reflecting, all puns intended, reflecting the um uh the light pollution that may, you know, spill over and that the applicant was going to lower the lights and deal with that. That did not happen and I I just have to wonders out loud with a building on that property, what kind of lighting would then need to be addressed? Um, it it seems unlikely that it would be low lighting um that was required on the part of the of the planning board. So, um I I guess here's kind of what it comes down to. Um, there's been a request to put a building in place with all kinds of concerns as um Attorney St. Andre has has highlighted, as now apparently town council has reiterated. Um, but the applicant is in, if you will, violation, has not yet complied, but they were s- what the conditions that they were required to comply with with their with their previous project. Um, I was prepared to say that the uh that the applicant has made no good faith effort. The fact of the matter is, Mr. Ferris did reach out to Attorney St. Andre today, so that's certainly a positive sign. But um honestly, um I I guess we it remains to be seen whether the uh whether there's going to continue to be, you know, productive, productive conversation in this regard, but I want to go on record to say that uh you know, uh the the construction of a contractor's building at the two fifty turnpike parcel uh certainly is not in the best interest of the neighborhood and the concerns we've raised and asked. Any questions? Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Mark Davis, thirteen Skylar Drive. And as I mentioned, I was the negotiator, one of them uh that negotiated with Andy Lane in nineteen eighty six. Basically, the neighborhood at the time, there were maybe twelve of us. The road was just barely built. He had concerns with a three and a half story building being built out on Route nine. It is the highest and best use. We've recognized what Andy Lane was trying to do. But we weren't going to oppose the project. We wanted to have the project approved, but we wanted certain conditions met that would make the neighborhood take that stance. So in a very positive way, we approached John Garrigan and Andy Lane with the town involved. It was the Board of Selectment at the time that were the special funding granting authority. And we structured a deal where Andy Lane, who was the largest residential developer in Metro West, quickly, at our surprise, agreed that the residential portion of his site was unbuildable. So he granted us uh that restriction. Uh, that restriction. It was not a thirty year restriction. It was a restriction in perpetuity and that language appears in the minutes of the selectments meeting. Our second uh objection that we wanted solved was that there would be no access. From the site onto Parkerville Road. And he agreed to that. Um, the, the third, and I'm drawing a blank here. Um, was, was the uh buffering. And, and basically the agreement, twenty five foot, twenty five foot, yeah. The, the, the agreement basically was. That the town could approve it with all his. Special permit needs and whatever waivers were needed and the neighborhood would sit back and not object and let it go forward. Andy Lane would go ahead and build his building, the town would go ahead and record all the documents and the neighborhood walked away, knowing we had a good deal. In nineteen ninety. Uh, with the change of use, that we're neighbors, you'll see it in the records, that opposed this project. I rose in support of the project. As long as Leaf System, Leaf Systems agreed to the previous restrictions. And they offered us another restriction, which is a twenty five foot buffer around. All the properties on Parkerville. All back of the properties of Skylar and now all behind the properties of Sarson Stone, which existed at that point in time. And there was a plan bandied about showing that twenty five foot. Section. Leaf Systems agreed to it. The zoning board agreed to it. And the neighborhood walked away as we did a number of years previously, knowing we had a deal. We lived up to our bargain. And didn't object to anything that uh needed to allow that to proceed. Both Andy Lane, the office building and Leaf Systems. Over the years have been good neighbors, we really didn't have any issues with them, with the exception of one. Every so often, uh, some guy would like to test out his four wheel drive vehicle. And drive down the little hill onto Parkerville Road and if you drive by, you'll, you'll see the tracks through the woods. And we'd make our biannual call to the uh zoning board, uh, the, the, the building inspector to tell him to stop. Uh, it's been an issue. The extra parking did come up. Uh, during the Leaf Systems. Um, um, hearings before the zoning board. Um. But it was never really resolved how it appeared. Uh, but there's nothing in the public record that ever permitted those extra spaces to be built. Um. So they're, they're there, they're in illegal use in a residential zone. But one other thing we did, and this relates directly to. One seventy four dash five, which the proponent has looked at. When we recodified the zoning uh in the nineteen nineties. This was one of the older parts of the zoning that stayed in force. One seventy four dash five applies to properties. That had. A district line that bisected the property somehow. Only when the property, when, when the districts were first put in place. And I don't know what that date is, I think it was sometime during the nineteen sixties maybe. But it pertained to certain properties in town that had this bisect. And rather than. Settle out monetarily with these property owners who had may felt that they had a value of downzoning. Because of how it affected the use of their property. This was kept in place to protect those remaining properties in town that are affected by that old zoning issue. That appeared. It is not something that is used today. We brought this up with Andy Lane in nineteen eighty six. Because that's when this thing appeared in the zoning. And it was agreed at that point in time that Andy Lane would separate the properties. He would make the residential property, most of it, follow the zoning line. And if you look at the zoning line today on the plan he showed where it bisects the building. That's the lot line since nineteen eighty six. So there is no application of one seventy four dash five. Because those rights sailed away once the lot line was put right on the zoning line. Those rights don't exist for this property. I wasn't really involved in the project on two fifty, uh, uh, but a butter, but I, I'm not an immediate a butter. I guess my ire was raised when I saw this plan appear at Concom in January. There's also some issues in the zoning bylaws. Where we have a clause in the front of the use, uses for each district. And basically the clause says. If a use is not listed in the zone. It's not permitted. And we had long discussions. When we did this, it wasn't very popular, but. I pushed and pushed and pushed. Because we wanted to make the zoning positive, we wanted to list all the things we wanted. And if something isn't there, we don't want it. Made it very easy and if you dealt with the old zoning, you knew how troublesome that was. So. If you look at the zoning of industrial. A contractor's yard is a permitted use. There is no such thing as a contractor yard building. If there is a use in the zoning that's permitted. You go down to the section with dimensional requirements and you can see what the setbacks are required and all the other issues within the zone. But you can't apply it to a. Use that you're making up. It's not in the zoning. He can call it a warehouse building, he can call it a storage building. But he can't call it a contractor's yard building because it's not a permitted use. On the plan he shows. If he can't use one seventy four point five, which I'm saying he absolutely can't use it. Because the law line has existed this way for thirty years.
Because the property line?
The property line is the zoning line. There is one section behind two fifty, which we allowed uh Andy Lane to incorporate in the industrial side. It's where a lot of his drainage structures from the building go. And we gave him some relief on his loading dock in the back of the building because it intruded on the twenty foot buffer that she's supposed to put. Between the two zones, so there was some relief back there and we allowed him to do that. He did what he, he was supposed to do and he eliminated those rights in nineteen eighty six. So when I looked at this plan in January, it didn't, it's been a while since I've walked through the zoning, but it was kind of a memory lane. Um. I looked at residential A and it's, it's not a permitted use. The setback is not a permitted use in a residential zone. You can't build a commercial building on a commercial lot. And put the setback into another zone. That's not the purpose of a setback. So not only is he. Trying to slip a use into the residential zone. He's also using the residential zone for his setback. And that's not what this zone is set up to do, there's a fifty foot setback behind that building. And that needs to be on the industrial portion. And I'll go publicly and say. I oppose what's being put in front of you and in forty years of living here, I've never stood before a board and said I oppose something. I've always said, well, I will prove it if these are done. This I will oppose because it's not legal. If he wants to move this warehouse, as it properly should be called. Onto his land with the proper setbacks. I'd, I'd. I'd walk away happy as long as our restrictions in perpetuity are still in place on that land. So I think there's some opportunities here to correct some of the misconceptions. But I urge you to consider that this building does not belong in residential land and should you set this precedent. I can tell you, every owner along Route nine will start to use this and push their buildings right up close to the residential areas. That's what we tried to avoid in nineteen eighty six, that's what we tried to avoid in nineteen ninety. We think we still have a deal in perpetuity. And that's what has made our neighborhood a place, nice place to live because we've always had that buffer from Route nine. And that's what we want to protect. Thank you.
Uh, does anybody else have anything they want to add or questions in the lectures? So, um. You can read to a, a continuation, I, I think it's like in the, in the best interest for everybody here, you hear all the concerns. Um, I don't know if I dare speak for all the board, but obviously I think it's in everybody's best interest. For the parties to meet and, and try to find common ground, I mean, I don't think we want to be at loggerheads over all these things. Um, we can involve our council and we can build all sorts of lawyerly paths, but. And we all know the best thing is. If you meet directly with them, you will lay their concerns. Which have been stated pretty eloquently tonight, I would have to say. It's in everybody's best interest, then we can, you know, even get the agreement that they're looking for, you guys get the much you are looking for. I agree not to intermingle the, the two different things, but I thought it was fair to raise the fact that Chris Quinn. Wanted to know what's the impact on, so it's a, it's a fair question because we all, we know it's out there, but. Um, I do agree about with my fellow board members though, that we need to, this particular special permit. We need to focus on these particular set of facts. Um, so having gotten down off the milk crate, does anybody from the board want to add anything or ask any other questions?
I guess, I have a question, I don't even know if I'm allowed to ask this, I think so. Um, the accusation that there was supposed to be a, a fence built to address the lighting, can the applicant? Explain why that hasn't been placed?
Yes, there is, in the approved site plan decision from last year, a fence indicated it would go down the zone. Uh, that is a privacy fence, so I think six feet tall with privacy slots if it would be built. Uh, the lighting though is separate, that was a separate plan and separate adjustments, but they're both covered by the twenty twenty two site plan decision.
So why hasn't the fence been built?
Uh, just because we were gonna be bringing this proposal forward, so why build a fence in an area where contractors are building proposed?
So you already thought that the fence wasn't gonna exist, so why?
I know, we wanted to make sure that this conversation had happened with you all to see what the community feedback was about a contractor's yard building before. Uh, eighty thousand dollar fence being constructed. The light changing.
Okay, um, something I would consider when you come back is, I mean, I've already mentioned that the building tried to be moved to the industrial part of the lot. Um, but I still think the fence would be a very important part of that, um, especially because if you have contractors coming in and out of that building and. And we all know they work very early in the morning and there's gonna be, it's probably about lighting and light pollution and there's gonna be headlights from trucks and such. That's something that I think the butters and that I would be considering um when we come back.
Sure. Uh, as of now, because we have, hasn't been allowed to open yet because we're still waiting in the certificate of occupancy. I can assure you that there's really no vehicle traffic happening in, in Parker Lot this time.
No, yeah, I get that, I was thinking about with the contractors, building that your strategy is.
And to be clear, the sensing just relates to the large eastern parcel. That's where it's not been installed yet, it's not closer to the self-storage building itself.
Do, actually, to, to expand on Jamie's, so could a fence be put in, that's supposed to be put in? And the building still be moved forward and have room for everything?
It's becoming very tight at that point, there's very, there'll be very limited access. Even if you move the building to the northeast of the lot corner. And then have the roll-up doors facing the south through the fence, I think it's becoming pretty restricted at that point.
And then, I mean, you brought up lighting too, and I know that point got brought up. We've had a lot of things in front of us regarding lighting, so I would, I would hope and assume that if something were to happen that. Proper lighting would be. Used.
Absolutely.
And.
We know, we know there's ways for it.
And I know we've gotten into on other various things, we've gotten into that pretty good one of which is. Right there, but uh. I don't know, but uh, I, I would assume that it, when, when that happens that. That proper lighting would be done to address the, the concerns of lighting.
You know that quite often is a concern of, of neighbors and of butters and. Public safety and all the big stuff.
We know from last year how much scrutiny the planning board gives that there at site plan review.
Yeah. I guess, thank you. Um, the only comment I would add is more back to town council again. It was great to get a lot of answers on a lot of the comments, but the whole ability of this board in the thirty foot. Zone would be more helpful for clarity, right? Um, it is common ownership, even though it's two separate lots, but just understanding. You know, if the neighbor's comments are, you know, are, are correct and that, you know. Whether we, you know, not that we would, but whether the board has the ability to. Allow the thirty foot incursion into the residential zone, just from the town council perspective. And just, just for clarity, I don't think that. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think we would all appreciate uh a little bit more. Time and, and with our opinion before we get to the, the next, the next hearing. Um, again, I, I still think that the key element was, you know, the, the uh collaboration of the parties to come up with something that's agreeable. For the neighborhood as well as the, the applicants, determine everyone's best because. You, you have, I mean, do you feel like you have enough of that feedback to go forward in that?
We, we didn't discuss the movement of the building. That might be enough for now, that might satisfy what we're looking for, we would.
I mean, it's, it's. I, 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 I think if it, if it ends up, I mean, this, this board is typically very sensitive to. What the butters have to say, so generally if that, you come to an agreement that's suitable and agreeable to the butters. It tends to be a little bit more favorable to the board.
Generally speaking to, uh, such as with how we feel about it.
And.
Uh, they're very far, my perception, very far apart if you were looking at the legal matters. Um. One side says we've got the right, the other side says you don't have the right, and that sounds like a very sticky cap to, to iron down. Um, because things weren't recorded, so you don't have the right, but you do have the right. Because our special permit or process says that there aren't legal kinds of, but do. Um, we shouldn't have been on the thirty feet, yes, we should have been on the, those are the real difficult negotiating points versus. Leaning against some other, you know.
Yeah, but I, we, we would have the right as a board.
As a board, right.
To grant a special permit and basically bring forwards the exact same instructions. But we already wrote to do that, so we can apply it that way. Um, so I think there's certain ways to do that, but.
Not, so not from our perspective, but from how the, I, I want them to, I, I want them very much to. Um, you know, work proactive with each other. But as, the points they don't agree, they're not very close on, on legal points in, in the position, the two positions. Maybe it's worth the delay.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe not, I don't know. But we have a room for.
Okay, yes. Um. Can I say uh one more thing? You may, yes. So John Palmer, one thirty one Parkerville, a director butter. And uh, the, the only point I want to make is I don't know how you can look at. Uh, this application for a special permit in isolation. Of, of the uh, the forthcoming forty B comprehensive permit. So the two are, are interconnected, I don't know how you look at one in isolation of the other. Uh, I, I, I would answer that, that is, is a fair question, I think for the applicant to say, what is the impact of the end of forty B? Um, I think we have to be careful at a single hearing of. How we, how we answer that, I, I guess that's all I'm saying. The, this special permit is, this is what we want to do, there's no mention at all forty B. We are aware of it, I think it's a fair question. It feels like you have to be careful how you include that.
Technically, if it's an ongoing meeting, I don't want to be dis.
Technically, if it's an ongoing meeting, we're not allowed to be discussing it.
Right, yeah, so.
Unless we're in session, we're not allowed to discuss it.
Maybe add clarity to that. Very good question. We're really not allowed to discuss in openly meeting format. Another application does it a different way. That's why, okay, it's not allowed.
Not allowed. But you couldn't, like, we couldn't, you couldn't have a conversation with us at the transfer station this weekend. Hey, what's going on with that forty heat project? Like, we're not allowed to discuss that. It's it's so it's it applies, the same rule applies here. We're only allowed to, as a board, we're only allowed to discuss it when it's. When it's in a meeting.
Well, and as as a resident, I'm just trying to make the point that I don't know how we can, we, uh, the town can look at. You know, one permit in isolation of another permit that both affect the same land. And I think we can, we can have that conversation with the applicant, but I think that the open meeting law makes it a little bit touchy.
I understand that now. Okay.
That's the point of clarification.
Yes, sure.
Bethwick Cough Through Skylar Drive, a director butter. Um, I'm a little confused from listening tonight that there was an agreement regarding the um, six foot privacy fence. And that it was not um, actualized from the developer. And it was, and if I heard correctly, it wasn't because they knew about this shed. Did we know about the shed then? So I don't understand if they knew about the shed and agreed to this fence. But held the fence because they knew about the shed seems quite disingenuous to me.
I agree, it's a.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Um, so the. Agree to a continuance to January seventeenth. My point four, we need to. Or make a motion to continue the hearing, but I don't think there's anybody else that has anything to want to raise. They have any motions continue to January seventeenth, one twenty-four.
Make the motion to continue this hearing to January seventeen, twenty twenty-two.
We have something else on the agenda that.
We have another application, special permit.
So do we need to make a town for that?
I would say. Is our standard.
But so, I'd like to make a motion to continue. Need to, oh, fifty term high growth contractors yard special permit. Uh, January seventeen, twenty twenty-four, seven fifteen.
I'll second that. All right, we have motion number second, all favors, I. Uh, opposed, nay, all, aye.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Doug, aye, Williams, aye. Thank you. Continue the hearing on January seventeenth, one twenty-four. Thank you all very much for your patience.
And angles on. I can bring kids all over the place now, so.
Nobody wants.
No, no, why would you? A little awkward.
Okay.
I mean, I think they could have stayed except for.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
It's a public meeting, you're allowed to hang out.
Yeah, no, they didn't have to leave.
Um, so the next agenda item is the meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes for November fifteenth.
Which were, they were actually pretty long, um, if everybody.
I read.
You did, okay. Were you, were you an alternate on that, Doug?
I was.
You were, but you but you attend, you were.
I attended and I I spoke my name in there, so I read my section.
Okay, and I think.
I read everything, but I did.
No, that's fine. If everybody reads their own section, you get the whole thing.
And I think everybody here was definitely there as well, I mean, I.
Sounds like I spoke at it.
I went. I went, grew them, but I didn't, I did not, with a fine teeth comb, to be honest, they looked to me like, they were pretty. Uh, and did anybody find any concerns in the meeting minutes? I thought like the the main points that we raised were concerned about, you know, moving and access and all that. They were all captured, so.
I thought they were good, yeah, well, for the topic.
That's a high bar, so.
The punctuation was excellent.
Thank you, thank you.
Impeccable. So do we have a motion to, I'm sorry, what time was the meeting?
November fifteenth.
Do we have a motion to approve the November fifteen minutes, which we read? All right, I just make a motion. I move to approve the minutes for the. Fifteen, even has written. Give me a second, okay. All in favor of approving the minutes that written, respond with aye, opposed, nay, all, aye.
Aye.
Jimmy.
Aye.
Doug, aye, Williams, aye. Next, it's the next agenda item, the the town meeting.
No, accessory apartment discussion.
Oh.
I was on the agenda, but I can update everybody.
Okay.
Because in my mind, how come I didn't read that on the agenda?
I don't.
Oh goodness, uh, yes, so I was at last, last week, a week and a half ago, slept board meeting. And a good result of it was, um, because the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Has pending legislation which may be approved by July, um, uh, that codifies, um, ADUs by right. Um, that should we address it for this town meeting and put it on a warrant. Um, we'd have to align with the state's um, legislation code in July. With that said, uh, we talked about it pretty extensively at the board meeting and. There was just one somewhat opposition to ADUs by right. Um, I can mention the board person's name. Sure, yes, Sam Sager said some concerns about it. Um, but uh, it was very well received, um, um. In regards to the needs that we may have in the town, uh, regarding, you know, putting more additional units on the market, um. Handling of disabilities, um, openness to different type of family members or situations to get them more easily. Uh, put something in your home, including an accessory unit in the hall with the kitchen or outside. So it wasn't a a lot of verbal, um, opposition to that. I spoke as an individual, why I had the interest in the ADUs and, uh, my interest came without. What if we didn't get the legislation passed in July? Was that maybe it's too tall a bar at town meeting, there's a lot of fear, maybe you may be up on the town warrant. Maybe do some education, but a code, um, in the area of the ADUs, we don't call them ADUs, some of our definitions. Are a bit dated, we don't address, um, short term rentals, I think what we need to, you know, maybe look at that more closely. Soon to end up in a situation, um, there are provisions in our current accessory apartment. Uh, that may be seen as limiting, uh, to, uh, people who don't have a lot, I didn't know because. I think we're twenty-five percent of the existing square for the house, or if you only had a thousand square foot house, we put two hundred square foot house. Um, versus a state leaning towards, uh, no more than nine hundred square feet, but, um, so you could actually, um, you know, the. Disproportionately, that math is a little bit more favorable to people in small houses versus large houses. And then there's some very old language, and maybe someone would be gracious as we start to get it towards town meeting. In nineteen seventy-nine, there's provision that someone were tracking it. We do have that meeting where someone went for an accessory unit and we said, what happened in the nineteen seventy-nine benchmark?
I actually tracked it. Paul Sabelli, the town supervisor, and I went through and tracked it.
Right.
So the language is any accessory apartment granted by the zoning board since January nineteen seventy-nine. But I think it's the condition of like granted by the zoning board of appeals. The number is very low.
Okay.
So you can't go more than five percent.
Of the existing, uh, single family homes in town, so, um. I'm not sure where that came from. I'm not sure what the concern was, why isn't it by law when we're so low, which brings the second question. And it it came up in our general discussion, it was with the sleep board, uh, was, is that even a real number, um? From a safety, you know, safety perspective, are people applying for the permits, there are examples, people share, you know, in town that. They went and put the kitchen in, set the kitchen in, they go to sell the house, and that's when the kitchen is set in kitchen, so so may have apartments in town that. Are not counted.
There's definitely some that exist that were not granted via special permit.
I think so, yeah.
There's just, either they predated that or, so, yeah, they just did it on wrong.
Right, so that that's a whole, so by right is a is a significant change, and then there was the awesome question. And I went back and forth, Kathy, Kathy Cook asked me, Kathy Cook asked me this question. Oh, goodness gracious, does it count towards our? Uh, yeah, yeah, we got, we got it, it's where this deep, I went deep diving to the formal housing question. Is if we increase our footprint more accessory apartments, um, there's another woman in Katherine. There's another woman who responded to me, it's escaping me, it does, it does add to our ten percent. Inventory, uh, stock, oh, and her negative, she had a little bit of negativity about it, but maybe to apply for some people. It only counts in, when we read the law on it, if they open that apartment, um, to public, the housing.
Oh, so if you do it for your mother.
Right, right, well.
How did they even track?
So what they do now in senior housing, if you've ever deep dug it, there's only a few senior housing units, you get on list. You guys should do track it, you get on a list and and if you get one of the units in a few minutes in town, um. They're trapping whether or not you've been on the list before or you're eligible, so we have housing, we're self, we're self housing, probably not think we track it. Um, but the point was, it can't add to our stock and and she said, well, nobody would want to do that and, uh. And I, you know, said, well, of course I'm aware of it, so it counts only if they have. The appetizing as a affordable unit, uh, you meet the mass regulation for affordable unit. And now you get someone you don't know, and her comment was, nobody would want that, and I don't know that nobody would want that, so. Uh, somebody may want to, uh, reach out and get extra income for the house, and that's probably where the, there may be some conflict. Town meeting, it's like we, we don't become a rental town or something to that effect.
Yeah, totally, I mean, that's the history of town meetings and communication, like getting anything changed from zone. Very difficult, we're resistant to change generally. So it's kind of interesting if there's something at a state level. I mean, then the state, the state rule applies. And there's already a little bit of a hot topic in town with that M N T A community thing, right, so. People don't love that, so I'm sure there was love.
So Hudson just wanted core, I think it's Hudson just wanted core, someone sent it to me, um, that they don't have to follow. The the state's superior, of course, it works for the work, I mean, I picked the wrong town, don't want to follow. Uh, that that mandated state level, mandating that we have to have another two hundred units by the, by the train station that. Of course, is a local zoning in the towns, uh, we want to control that, so I don't know if the words out in that. I was just about changing a few things in the code.
Yeah, so that we don't go too far off into the weeds here, but that, as far as the ADUs, that was discussed with the selectmen. And there, so there there are opinions, they want to wait, see what happens.
Yeah, they want to wait because there's a little bit of lean to ADU by right, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm a hundred percent ADU by right. I'm a more incremental approach because the topic. Uh, so we can do things, another thing we could do is remove planning board, and they just come for special, while we've gone back and forth about. Uh, nine hundred square foot, to make it simple, simpler.
Hmm.
Um, so that stamp Siders was in that realm, it's like, we still need special permitting, simplify the need special. I don't know how people feel, that's, I wasn't prepared, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, that kind of, well, it it. It gets to.
I'm prepared enough, I remember this.
I mean, it really, it really becomes a a zoning coach, right, that, um. If somebody would need to, uh, write, uh, a, uh.
So, uh, Andrew Dennett. Andrew Dennett said that he, because the way we retain, uh, Jake Tolliver. Yeah, that his law firm, not Jay, but there's someone very good at his law firm, that they would be obligated or under our contract to get that warrant written by them. Did somebody, did I just make that up? I did not.
I know some council reviews more articles than help with language and.
Help with language, so we need someone to, but it wouldn't be us necessarily.
Well, you can, I think typically you can, you know, you can draft the law article and they would, you know, to make sure that's the rule. Probably he, oh, you know, probably go through and do a review before you have that.
But I I don't think, this is like, this is not really just. For us, because we're, we're, we don't break the rules, no.
No.
So then that even becomes a conflict, so we're, we're, you know, we're given the rules to. To see how they apply to to an application, but we're not the ones, we're not the ones writing.
No, no.
Especially not as a board, so as a, as an individual or a town member, that's one thing, but as a. As a board, I don't think that's, it's it's not for us to do.
I also agree that if it's gonna be moved, if there's a state decision in July, it could be. Between January and July, or once, it's usually in March, January, March. A lot of wasted time and arguing and energy, and I know what you guys, what I'm saying in town meeting. It's, it's, um, challenging to sit there for so long. And people just want to hear themselves speak and to have a whole discussion for something that may be moved.
Right.
Three months after it's implemented. I, to me, it makes more sense to see what happens at the state level.
But I know like the, it might be like a similar thing, like it was a weird one for the whole, um. Like marijuana dispensaries, so it got approved at the state level. And so then. We did, we did, we did, so if it got approved at state levels, then it got approved at the town, you know, the town approved it.
Yeah.
Without much like fanfare or contributor, like not a lot of, a lot of people showed up like, you know, to like for against the type of. But it's like, oh, well, the state says we should, you know, can do it, so all right, we'll do it, so then it got brought to us, to the Z V A. Then, no, because we had to set the zone, so then, so the town then did bring it to us to say, okay, Z V A, set the zone for it, it's like.
Right.
You know, so then, you know, it was funny, like at the time, I was like, no, I don't want one at all, so, no, I don't want to set a zone. And, uh, and then I was like, well, if you guys don't set a zone, then it can go anywhere once in the town. Oh, okay, so then we're like, all right, the zone is the Route nine corridor, so it has to be like a property on Route nine, like that was what was decided would be the only. And then an applicant did come to us, and then all of a sudden there was like.
Twenty.
There was lots of people.
No, there was, there was only one applicant, so it was, you know, the the property here is now closed. But all of a sudden, then there was like hundreds of people in the room against it, it's like. Well, why didn't you guys speak up and tell me? Well, why didn't you guys speak up and tell me? In the, in the, in the, in the, the, the um, the meeting that we, it's a public meeting, it was the, it was the very first meeting that was on uh. That this, that was on, well, I don't think we had Zoom yet, that was on uh live.
Oh, was it?
It was our first live meeting for the uh, for the, to set the zone, and there wasn't one, not one person came to it. But all of a sudden, like I show up and it's like, you're on TV tonight, hmm?
Yeah, okay.
I'm really worn out, I'm.
Yeah, pop shop.
But then, you know, so yeah, that was.
Is that your first, first, why did we do that? It's like.
That was the first time.
You were, you always mentioned that, yeah.
To push for that.
So, this is just a, an informal committee, um, um, so there's just a member of planning, member of select board, uh, member of ZVA.
So, yeah.
Working through ideas, it's not.
Yeah, I know, I, I did, I, I would agree with Paul, it's not something for us to advance, I, I think it's a fair topic. Bring up and keep us up to date with what you, what you find out, but Paul's right, I mean, I don't think it's our job to take any sort of position on it, but. I think the interest in it is, is, it's, it's fair enough to.
Not here, I'm sort of building one right now.
Yeah, so where it is, is not this town meeting, next town meeting, um, to see what the state does, and there seems to be a lot of. Lot of positive for to move some change forward, um, um, post-July.
Okay.
And we're really quite positive from planning, from select board, and it sounds from you guys, although ultimately, it's gotta go to town meetings.
Gotta go to town meetings.
Town meeting, and, and as an individual, I'll be a proponent for simplicity. Because I, I'm wondering if that, unless the state makes it sound like it was pop shops.
Cool, so that's a couple of things, so just quick thoughts, um. The state definitely is making an earnest effort to pass ADU.
Yeah.
As a right or some, you know, it has to get the legislator, that type of stuff. Based upon the California precedent, which actually resulted in a lot of ADUs across the state.
Yeah, there was a, there was an article about that, it sounds like they're very popular in California.
Very popular, but, so I just, I just said that, and I think it makes a lot of sense to wait for the state, because I think the state's already moving forward and it can still probably give us lots of guidelines.
Yeah.
This board is likely going to inherit the approval of those ADUs, right, so that's why I think, I think it's a very relevant topic. I will say more just, you know, how it can also want to shop see committee um as well, but. ADUs do have a place in town, right, I mean, not getting into the as of right or location or anything, um. Us as adult children obviously have parents, right, and so I've seen a number of people who, which you already mentioned. People have converted portions of their basement, you know, and, you know, parents want some independence and not have to. Be dependent upon their kids, you know, the adult children, you know, upstairs type of thing, right, so. Um, so there's definitely a need for it, right, because as we have, you know, we're all working type of thing, and so how do we do that? So I also know that other elderly people sometimes are in a house they don't want to leave. But the ability to keep paying taxes and upkeep become a extremely difficult too as well, if. You know, and so an ADU may give supplemental income to a senior who lives in town, right, and it may not be related party, right, you know, so.
Right, so there's just, there were so many plus sides and scenarios, I mean, group homes actually allow them to have to. It'd be a little bit easier to, to set up those kinds of compartments, or you need someone to. Just rent, rent space and probably more than not rent your rooms in the house to make ends meet here and there.
Especially because we're a really high cost housing town now as well too, and so there are people who've been here fifty, sixty years or that. You know, may not have the needs to keep up with what's going on, so.
So, you, you could take, so the bar for some, for us, going deep dive, the bar for the low income. As we get ten percent, and that's still pretty a high bar, that math is even high. So, the one bedroom, in this town, is sixteen fifty, and affordable, one bedroom.
Yeah.
That's what the, you know, pushes on development, is that's really the amount of money for one bedroom, you know, that's done in a very. Very congested style.
Like you're saying, I'm doing a lot of work right now in Antucket, in the same, I mean, it's, it's, there's, yeah, there's such a need. For it, because it's so, like, said, you have a house, hard to, hard to maintain it, hard to own it, hard, you know. So, yeah, if you can offset it with some, you know, some income, and then vice versa, there's a lot of people that are just looking for a place to, you know, to live over it.
I was gonna say, there's so many people who can't afford to buy their own home, they can't, the down payment, the mortgage payments. Whether it's a stranger who ran out to, or even your adult children.
Or you die, say, there was just so many of costs and there, you die and your children cannot afford to pay the real estate taxes.
Right.
If they inherit this house, and that's what's going, flatten out the estate, it's better to have home ownership, so there's a lot of reasons. Um, but then there's some of the negatives, I'm probably gonna look more towards that as we get to maybe the next, next. Special reason, this March may be for next fall, but there was a special time, you know.
Yeah.
The scenario is that people would naysay, don't, you know, naysay.
It, it, it can't add to the, it can't add to the housing stock, which increases our number, which means that the ten percent.
Do you want to open yourself up to renting? Now, I have been a landlord in the numbers of some areas in my life, and it takes a certain kind of person, you gotta be okay with that. So I do think there's a, there's a possible, if there's some people very old to that, I've been to a couple of cities, uh, which very congests out. Seattle, you've got, let's say, I was living in my mom and dad's house, they're writing out their childhood bedrooms, there is a lot of that going on. Because that whole thirty, forty something, they don't want, they're not married, something they don't want, they're not married. And they're all living, you know, five strangers, which you can do in this town.
Ah, kids.
It's one would like for a lot.
But great update, I mean, like, it's great to, yeah, there's so much going on.
Yeah, it's really, it's a really, uh, fun thing to kind of be.
That's interesting.
Right, disability, we did, we approved something that was.
We have, we have approved.
Some interesting applications, you know.
Like, we want the full changes, where, I, I can remember doing, um, on Stupto or whatever that, it was definitely for. Uh, an, an older parent, uh, they were renovating like the entryway and they're making basically a separate apartment basement. So, it's definitely.
Yeah, I know, I, I know I was, we had one on Middle Road. That we, I remember, same thing, it was.
Yeah.
It's like the basement would have a separate.
Yeah, I think, I think we're talking, yeah, Stupto's right off, you know, so I, I think.
Oh, we're talking about the same thing, oh, okay.
Maybe the address is actually.
We just, but it was also. Joe Hill, Joe Hill, we approved one, it was for disability of the spouse.
Oh, yes, yes.
And it was just two burdensome to actually put it in the house, they had to make it an outside unit with a funky porch.
Yeah, they did that as a two-family conversion from essentially to a two-family, to an ADU, yeah.
That's what that was, right, so, yeah, seven eighty U, which put it. And that's where the house, the footprint of the house was so small, it was a hardship. Probably, there's no place to enter that particular house and. They needed living space, so that, so, we'll, we'll just see, it's gonna move along, I think.
Yeah.
I don't know about the MDTA minimums, that just lost.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's not, let's not go down that road. Okay, uh, thank, yeah, thank you, um, so. The, the next item we had was a special permit post-moran article, and uh, what's the? I, I have made no progress on that at all, to be honest.
Okay.
When do they need to have something?
So the warrant closes February sixth, I believe.
Yeah, town's.
Um, so, I was really deep in.
I'll be, I'll be better after.
His part of the meeting, so, between now and then, we have this one, and we have January seventeenth, which we just continued this.
Yeah.
Application to. Um, so yeah, Tuesday, February sixth, warrant is closed and signed by, oh, no, signed later, but. Anyway, so it needs to be in by then, um. I did send you guys some more information and, you know, examples of language and stuff to take a look at, and met with Karina. We had a really productive conversation, you know, I mentioned how we had previously discussed the two years with a possible one-year extension. She was on board with that, they already do that for some of theirs, um, so it would be kind of consistent for their. The lit project, I think they have that language, um. And site plan, I think.
I think it's, I mean, honestly, I think it's very fair and balanced, and it doesn't mean we have to give the extension, usually has to be, there's gotta be some justification.
Yeah.
But, two years, seeing like if you haven't done something within two years, well, then you should have to come back and ask for an extension, but. Same time, we go, we're all busy, right, so unless, the mature reason why not to extend it, right, it's like. Why have to start the whole process?
Right, yeah. I, I think that's pretty reasonable, bro.
I think when you had, like, you would ask my, like, I know, like, again, right now I'm doing stuff on Antucket, in the approval, it's, it's three year. Which I found, I assumed it was two, because that's like normal, and you know, there's three, which. That's a long time to not do something.
Yes, yeah, it is a long.
I think it can't be more than three, so if you don't do anything, it is three, right, so that definitely, I would think we want to change the two.
And you get it semantics too, because it's not like if you haven't completed the project, it started the project.
Started.
So a lot of people, like, a lot, like, you might get something, like, I got something very comprehensive. Uh, approved recently, but now I don't think, I'm not gonna do the whole thing. So I'm gonna do like a part of it, so I guess I, you know, that means I've started it that then.
Right.
And that gets in a little gray area for me, okay, so I've started this, does that mean?
Does that mean ten years from now you can finish it?
Like, I don't, I don't, I don't know, it's, I'm not, it's not my house, I don't, probably ten years from now I'm a Trump supporter.
Right.
I don't, I'm hoping I have to own it six months from now, but uh, but uh, you know, you know, turning it over, like, here, here's a property with this, and it's, it's hard to get approved. You know, it's a very expensive, long process, so it's worth something to say here the approvals.
Right.
And uh, but, you know, so now it's, it was approved in, you know, mid-June, uh, mid-July, so, you know, I could still say, hey, you've got. Two plus years to, to do this if you, if you so wish.
There's also linear suggestion, again, some people will come to this board to get a special permit, but then they have to apply. Or Concon, right, and so there's a block that's already running, yeah, and. They could be a year in permitting beyond this board, if it's more, like, even like some, not to get into the project statement, like, if something comes, like, has to go through site plan review still, so. Um, and then we also go through economic science, right, just, you know, but, so that's, but.
And my goodness.
But I mean, that's.
Access to resource, right, contractor's not available for another.
But that's like an excellent point, is if you had to come to us first, you get a variance, and then you're still back and forth of planning board for two years.
Yeah.
You know, so that's probably a practical reason why it could be, it could be extended if asked for without having to, to, you know, reapply type thing.
Yeah, right. Good.
So you guys can definitely put that language in there, you know, like, for the pause, and it is that the discretion of the board, so.
I think, I think that makes sense, and I can defer to, you know, council specifically on language like that, but to be honest, like, that, I think makes sense. It's not like it has a right extension, right?
Nowadays.
So, I mean, I did send the, that very, very generic placeholder to Mark Purple, so that's in there. We just need to come up with definitive language, send it in prior to February sixth.
Okay.
Um, I, if I may also recommend have council look it over for language and. So we need to.
Yeah, I, so I'll, I'll try to work on that a little bit with uh, coming in there yourself, and have something a little bit more.
Do they want it actually written by us, or the, or the selling points, like made?
Like, written by us.
Yeah, written.
And then submit.
Not just like, here's a bullet points, and you guys, you know.
Uh, yeah, well, I, I'm sure with, with town council, we could define it, and I, I think we can probably, I want to say there's some existing language. Kind of lean on, evolve on that, so.
Absolutely, I mean, there's language within um, one seventy-four twenty-five A. Where it talks about variances, I mean, the, the timeframe for lapse for variances is one year, so we could just switch it, you know, for two. And then, there's language within one seventy-four ten F, which is site plan for planning board, where they talk about, um. You know, extension, you know, the applicant shall be granted a single one-year extension by applying to export and writing prior to the date of expiration, so. It's really just putting it all together and then figuring out where within the code you guys want to put it.
Okay.
Um, so I recommended one seventy-four nine, which is special permit requirement. And section one seventy-five, or one seventy-four twenty-five A, there's a special permits paragraph there, just so it's special permits and variances, but then. Because it also impacts planning board special permits to go in that special permit requirement section, that makes sense, so.
We definitely, I mean, again, if you guys can work with town council, like, I think the theme is there, I think we all know the structure, but specific language, I, I would defer. To town council, consistency is great on much other uses of it, from other, you know, regulations, so. But I do like the extension being a bit qualified, like, there's gotta be some.
Yeah.
Some latitude for us, right, to say, it's not just they show up and it's automatic.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if they haven't done something in two years, it'd be great to understand that, you know, they, you know. I don't know what the right language is, but there's some level of scrutiny that we could have that we could decide for some reason, we don't want to extend it, you know. Um, but, not trying to be unfair too, I just think there should be some discretion on that extension for us, that's what.
That sounds.
Or for the board, in that world it might be.
And then just one small point of clarification that I reached out to town council on, um. Where it says the date of grant thereof, I wanted to, you know, kind of narrow down what that date is. And he said it's best to go from when the decision is certified by the town clerk. So after the appeal period is granted, so it's not the date that you vote, it's not the date it's filed, the date it's certified is that date of grant, so.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Makes sense. That's twenty days after.
Twenty days after it's filed with the town clerk.
I think, I think we need not just to say certified. We're all the twenty days.
I mean, you can, you can copy the MGL language, which is from the date of grant thereof, if you wanted to do that, you could clarify it more.
Yeah, because we have that thing that will be conscious into, been voted on by the town, and then uh, Massachusetts says, no, that's not legal. If you could follow their language, it's probably, probably gosh. Okay, I'll, I, I will, get to bring more effort, you know. After the holidays.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not gonna happen, no, not gonna lie.
We don't have enough on our.
Too close.
It's in my big to-do list, not important.
So maybe by January seventeenth, we could.
Yeah.
Have something more concrete.
Okay.
Because I know we won't hear anything on, on these applications, so it's, it's two hours before the beginning. We, we, we did throw a lifeline out of that, it was really tough.
But, well, but I mean, by uh, town meeting law, we're able to grab something, share it. The town meeting law, for review, I mean.
There cannot be any discussion.
There's no discussion, right?
Right.
So I could, I could say, hey, this is what I came up with, go out to everybody, they can look at it, and then we can come to the meeting, I mean, I think, I think town meeting laws. Open me, open uh, meeting laws, to deliberate about it, I think.
I was so proud of this Dave's doing, I got it.
I did not write that down, and that's not going in the minutes, so. Okay.
Okay, James.
Yeah, it's like, trying to prepare Paul to.
She's ready to hear a motion.
I'll just, really quick, the next meeting, I know there's a lot of them coming up.
Yeah.
Um. So, January tenth. Is the park central, for those of you.
I almost thought we forgot.
I know, I know, I'm just. Yeah.
Uh, okay.
I'm not.
That one is in person at the townhouse. Um, and then January seventeenth, we have one special permit variance application. It's two applications, but same person, um, and then the one from tonight, so I don't know, I had originally planned for it to be Zoom. But based on responses from the neighbors for this meeting, I don't know what you guys want me to do.
I, I, I can be, I can actually be in person, you know, so, practically unusual comes up my way, you know.
Can we come here again?
Working my way around.
Come here, I, I will see.
I like this.
Um, okay, I will see if it's available.
Yeah.
Now it feels so good to have that.
It's nice on a walk.
If, if you even want to watch on January seventeen.
Hmm.
Please, so.
Well, I would walk, actually walk.
But I would joke around skating indoors.
Very scared, you really scared, so.
Oh, you're a skater, no.
No, I play, I coach as I. I coach, I, well, I coached at.
St. Mark's?
At St. Mark's, and I.
Played with Gavin?
I played, well, not, I don't anymore, but I played on uh, Monday nights, men's league. One of the fellows in the audience was on my team, but he moved to Florida, I haven't seen him since he moved to Florida, but I, uh, um. So I played Monday nights in Westboro, and then Friday nights.
You play.
We play here at some.
That sounds like, I was, I was skiing for years, just those open skates, I'm terrible. So I broke my arm, and I moved a little left and skate, since I broke, I can't believe I broke that, this kid's got on any of my skates, I never would fall, if though.
Nice to learn.
It is very hard, especially in the middle hour.
That's that, my turn again?
Your turn.
I'd like to move the motion to a journey. Oh, actually, I already did this once tonight at another board meeting I was on.
Really?
Yes. Yes, this is my second tonight, geez.
Okay, I'll second it.
A motion to adjourn with a second, I'll favor respond with I if opposed N, Paul.
Nice.
Laura's eye, Amy.
Hi.
Doug's eye, William's eye, you've done much, you need to adjourn.